Join us in the pledge.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you for coming. Call the roll, please.
Trustee Spurling?
Here.
Trustee Lee?
Yes.
Trustee Heinz. Trustee Youngerman?
Yay.
Trustee Marisak?
Yes.
Trustee Bond?
Yes.
And we're all here this evening. Under public participation, public comment, anybody here willing to address the board? Anybody have anything to say, though? All right, hearing none, we'll move on. I read the consent and entertain a motion for approval. Minutes of the village board meeting of May 11th, executive session minutes of May 11th, accounts payable through May 21st. Appointment by the village president of John Aiman to Historic Preservation Commission for a term from June 1st, 2015, to April 30th, 2018. Appointment by the village president of Barbara Peck to the Historic Preservation Commission for the same term. And then item F, Ordinance 1667, amending the village code regarding solicitor ordinances. This is a waiver of the first and passage on the second reading, and we talked about that at the last meeting.
Motion to approve, second.
Moved in second. Call the roll, please.
Trustee Marisak?
Yes.
Trustee Bond?
Yes.
Trustee Spurling?
Yes.
Trustee Lee?
Yes.
Trustee Heinz. Trustee Youngerman?
Yay.
That carries 6-0. Thank you. Under items for separate action, we have Ordinance 1668, adopting the Illinois State Plumbing Code with amendments. And this is waiver of first and passage on the second. With that, I'll ask Director Young for a summary.
Thank you, President Broali. Tonight, after many months of long work between our plumbing inspector, Paul Buddy, and the village attorney's staff, we're happy to report that the Illinois Department of Public Health has approved our proposed amendments to the plumbing code. Basically, what it boils down to is continuing to require copper water pipes within any new construction within the village, any rehab construction as well, as far as that goes. But there's been a movement to have PVC and other types of products included as part of plumbing requirements. And the consensus of the staff and our consultants was that we should maintain, if possible, the copper plumbing. Paul is with us tonight. If you have any specific questions, I'm not well-versed on this, but he definitely is. And I'd be happy to go over that with you if you'd like. The one thing that I will note is that the Department of Public Health has indicated that the ordinance, as we've drafted it through Steve's office and Laura's office, is fine, but it has to be adopted as-is. We can't make any tweaks to it at this point. It's been reviewed by them. They've agreed that this is an acceptable local amendment. And again, Paul would be able to answer more specific questions if you have them.
Thank you. I just have one question. The, if we approve this tonight, we're, are we essentially, or not essentially, are we approving the status quo? We're going to maintain the copper pipe that we now require. This is not ratcheting up or down any of our standards. This is just going to keep what we have?
That's essentially correct. It's mostly about the pipe. There are some other grammatical changes within the amendments, but that is the crux of what we're trying to do, is to maintain the standards that we've had for many years. So, Paul, if you'd like to address the question.
There were about six or seven different amendments, and one of them was, I mean, a no-brainer. The code, Illinois code, right now calls for three-foot berry for a water service. Well, that won't work up here in this part of the country, so we had changed it to five-foot. The other one was three-quarter water service is allowed. We know we wanted one inch, because with the upgrades of houses, we had, if you add a bathroom in your basement or something, you won't have an adequate service. You'd have to change it. And there are other ones, you know, minor ones. One of the things that, actually, one of the things we did change, or we did change, was we took the cast iron out of the code. So now PVC is allowed for sanitary waste underground and above ground. So that was one of the changes we did make. Otherwise, we're changing almost everything, staying status quo.
Awesome. Are you guys getting a lot of pressure, or any pressure from home builders on this?
I would say a little, not a tremendous amount of pushback. And some other adjacent communities, it's acceptable under their plumbing codes. So, yes, we would see that with some home builders. But I wouldn't say, Paul, correct me if I'm wrong, I wouldn't say we're getting tremendous pushback.
No. It's, I mean, they know what, you know, they, in our area up in this part of Northern Illinois, I mean, it could change, and I think because some of the changes have been made now that we are allowed to make amendments, you'll see that most of the people up in Northern Illinois will stay with the copper.
Okay. Any questions for staff or Paul Buddy on this?
I just need, I want to make sure I'm understanding. We were operating under the Illinois State Plumbing Code to begin with, correct? We have to be, because that would override any of our ordinances. So, the examples you gave, we were just making amendments of those specific things that would apply to our area. And then the IDPH had to approve those amendments? Is that what we were doing?
Yes, if we tweaked, the Illinois State Code is the code of the land, okay? If we tweaked anything, which we tweaked, as I say, five or six different things, if we tweaked that, we had to go and send all of our amendments down there. They had to approve it. I mean, with the help of the attorney's staff, Jessica and myself worked on this thing since last November. You know, going back and forth. And so we finally tweaked, you know, we got the amendments we wanted. I'll address the other one when you get to that one, about 15.
Okay, thank you.
What predicated this? Is it a policy change or a code change from the state that now allows PVC pipe anywhere in the state? And then we're ratcheting it back to what we originally had? Is that what caused this?
Essentially, yes.
Yes, essentially, that there were new code changes that came into effect last year. And then, all of a sudden, the Illinois Department of Public Health says, okay, this is the law of land. You know, and then you'd, if you have, if you wanted amendments, you had to go through this procedure to get an amendment.
Okay.
And there was a lot of, you know, it was a lot of pressure from up here in this northern part of the state that we wanted to make sure that we could hold with our amendments that we wanted to have up here.
Okay.
So this essentially, we're sticking with copper as opposed to PVC or PECs or something like that, correct?
Correct.
Okay. Thank you.
Thank you to staff and to Paul for raising the bar and keeping the bar where it should be, instead of going down with the state standard. I appreciate it. And it sounds like it was a lot of work, so thank you.
Paul and Laura's office put a lot of time in on this, yes.
Thank you. There's no further comment. I entertain a motion for approval.
I make a motion to approve of Ordinance 1668.
Second. Moved in second by trustee Bond. Call the roll, please.
Trustee Heinz.
Yay.
Trustee Youngerman?
Yay.
Trustee Marisak?
Yes.
Trustee Bond?
Yes.
Trustee Spurling?
Yes.
Trustee Lee?
Yes.
That carries 6-0. Thank you. We'll move on to Ordinance 1669, which is revising the village code regarding plumbing. And this is waiver of first and passage on the second. And I'll turn it back over to Director Young.
Thank you. This is piggybacked on to the previous item. So this is specifically our code and how we would amend it with the various wording changes. And again, I'd like to have Paul make some comments on this.
When the department came in, we had to submit our amendments to them. But unbeknownst to me, they looked on our webpage and found this old 15, Section 15 for plumbing that was there. I've been around here for 45 years, and it was there before I was here. So they wanted to tweak that because they didn't like the definition we had of plumbing. It didn't quite fit their definition, so we changed that to meet their requirements. They made me change, and I had no problem with it. If I find somebody that is an unlicensed person doing plumbing, you know, they wanted me to refer them to the Illinois Department of Public Health. They have the law and the rules to go after people. And I says, I don't have a problem, you know, that would be, that would be helpful to us if I found an unlicensed person. So that was one of the main. And there was a couple of other things where they took a phrase out here or there. And, but basically, all they did is clean it up for us. And I actually thanked them for it, because I didn't think about submitting that part.
Questions? Motion?
So moved.
Second.
Call the roll, please.
Trustee Heinz.
Yay.
Trustee Youngerman?
Yay.
Trustee Marisak?
Yes.
Trustee Bond?
Yes.
Trustee Spurling?
Yes.
Trustee Lee?
Yes.
That carries 6-0. Thank you both. Move on to the Clark Environmental Mosquito Management Contract for this year. Who wants that?
Engineer Wallers will handle that.
All right, go ahead.
Public Works asked me to bring forward renewal of the Clark mosquito contract. It's similar to the program that was in place last year. Minor increase in cost, honestly, and we had budgeted $35,000 for the mosquito control program. So it's consistent with the budgeted item. There are some items in there that are discretionary. And typically, the director of Public Works had made the call on some of those things, like if we needed aerial spraying, the helicopter sprays and things like that. So that's all still in there. So it's the complete program. And then there, down the road, there is some discretion that's applied to the program. So staff would request approval of that. It is a budgeted item, by the way.
When's this supposed to start, Pete?
Well, they indicated that some of the work, the initial exploratory work starts right away, just as soon as, and I'm not by any means an expert in the mosquito field, but, you know, they start to track the hatching of the mosquitoes and, you know, any issues. And so then they direct their responses, you know, per that.
Like I kind of mentioned before, I don't mind the catch basin, because I know that's where they kill a lot of them. And the areas in the harborage areas of where mosquito sleeps or whatever, I don't mind any of that. The one I question, and I would not vote for it now, I'd like to see our new Public Works director bring the guy from Clark here. And this drive-by in residential areas is a joke. Pete's brought it up for years. Last year, this guy came through my two streets going 40. I could have had a Mondo sit there and arrest the guy for speeding. And it was a night like tonight where the wind was blowing, and everything went up in the sky, and you didn't even see anything. I mean, to me, we just threw money away there. I'd like to see somebody from management come, because they're hiring idiots, and the management's got, has got to be controlling his people. And, I don't know, we haven't had a guy in mosquito. They used to come here and make a presentation. And now maybe he just thinks this is an automatic.
I'd be happy to request that they send a representative here for the next meeting. We could table it until then, you know.
Well, that part of it, I'd like to be tabled. If you think the rest of it's needed now, I can see the...
I don't think all of it is. I mean, I just, you know, we didn't drill into their schedule. The, you know, the stuff that they sent said that they would start, you know, certain things. But I don't think two weeks or anything like that is going to be the end of the world, certainly. So either way is fine. If you want to, you know, make a portion of it approved, and then we can get the rest of it, that's fine, too. So either way is acceptable.
I think they're the kind that do good work, especially in the basins. And I think they're about the only one around to do it. And a lot of the other villages have it, but I would think the other villages are having the same problem we are. The guys go down the street in those pickup trucks, going, you know, over the speed limit, spraying on bad nights. I can't believe other villages aren't seeing the same thing.
Yeah, they might be. And even if they're going the speed limit, the, and it'd be great to have somebody here, the, the smoke that comes out, it actually only, I heard, or they've, I've heard from somebody, maybe Mike Poobens, that it only kills mosquitoes that it comes into contact with. So that smoke, when it dissipates, is, that's it. So I would like to learn a little bit more about it, so.
I know when Pete brought it up, Gary said they could have a guy driving behind him and make sure he goes slow, but that, to me, is ridiculous, because then we're paying more than 20 grand. And if they have a guy that knows what he's doing, you would have people reporting it to me, saying, "Did you see that guy go down the street?" Yeah, I did, I did, I did, you know. I don't mind make passing a motion to accept all of it, except the $19,000, and let him get to go on the basins and whatever. But I would like to see him come back, somebody from Clark, and discuss the $19,000. So I'll put that in the form of a motion.
How would you guys, how do you guys feel about that, or should we table the whole, the whole thing?
I don't know when the mosquitoes are in the basins.
It might be an advantage if they could order the material ahead of time, at least. I'm inclined to favor approving everything, as trustee Lee has suggested, except the spray.
Except for Part 4B?
I'm fine with that. Okay, so I'll take that as a motion from trustee Lee and a second from trustee Bond. Is there any discussion on that? Yeah.
Everything except Section 4, Part B.
Is there any other conversation on that?
So it's to, we're voting to approve it minus Section 4.
Everything except.
4B, yes.
Correct. And not that we don't want to do that, but we'd like to talk about it.
We're tabling Section 4B.
Right.
Approving the rest, tabling Section 4B. Is that your motion?
That is my motion, ma'am.
Okay. All right, no discussion. Call the roll.
Trustee Lee?
Yes.
Trustee Heinz?
Yay.
Trustee Youngerman?
Yay.
Trustee Marisak?
Yes.
Trustee Bond?
Yes.
Trustee Spurling?
Yes.
That carries 6-0. Thank you, Pete. All right, last item for separate action. We have a PSA with Engineering Enterprises for Quiet Zone Study in the amount of $20,793. With that, I'll turn it back over to engineer Wallers.
Thank you. So this is an item that we've discussed from time to time. It's the precursor to establishing a quiet zone. The federal highway, or, excuse me, the Federal Rail Administration and the Burlington Northern Santa Fe Railroad have a set procedure for communities that qualify for a quiet zone. And the steps are, I think, are, I think, fairly, clearly illustrated in the PSA. We've done quiet zones for City of Aurora and for a few other communities. So, you know, that it's, it's a set thing that you can't vary from. It's quite, it takes more time than you would expect, because there's a lot of time in between meetings, and the coordination seems to take a lot longer, because you have to get the federal authorities here, along with the railroad authorities. So we, and we also break it into three phases, so that if you find out during one of the phases that it's not practical to do it, you can stop. So that's the reason we break it into three phases. So first phase has the preliminary investigation, determine risk index, and there's a diagnostic meeting, and then traffic counts, and then a quiet zone calculation. That's like a Phase A, if you will. I'll strike that. I should read my own proposal. So 1 and 2, the first two pieces is the preliminary risk index and the coordination and the diagnostic meeting. So that's the first phase. Usually find out quite a bit during that, that amount, during those meetings. Then the second phase is items 3 and 4, which are the traffic counts and the quiet zone calculation. And then the last phase is the remaining items, which would be the notice of intent, coordination improvements, notice of establishment. So there's quite a few steps to go through, but this is the process that's needed if we want to establish a quiet zone. There's no guarantee, you're not obligated if you go through this to establish one. There may be costs involved, once we go through the determination process for you, in order to score high enough to get the quiet zone. And then at that point, you can decide whether or not you think it's cost-effective to implement it. Sometimes it can be an inexpensive procedure, and if you'll notice, like on Aurora, on Edge Lawn, you'll see that they just have flexible delineators along the crossing of the BNSF tracks. That was what was needed for them to qualify. They also closed a crossing, and that gave them some points. So there's some trade-offs. Now, obviously, we won't be closing any crossings, but we do have a new crossing that's fairly modern, so that's good. Because that's sometimes another thing, the, sometimes the equipment isn't, isn't modern enough to get a good index. There's a lot of things that go into it. You just kind of have to get into the process in order to really determine if it's going to work or not. And, you know, as we go through it, if we see that the costs are just not, you know, we'll come back and say, here's what the costs are going to be. Do you want to proceed? And sometimes there's not definitive information until you get to the end either. So we may not be able to stop, and we might get to the end and then make a final determination. So that's, that's the general outline of the program. And it takes quite a while.
This is something that I think we talked about every budget season since I've been on the board, that people in that area have talked about and asked for. And we put it off last year to wait until that crossing was up and running, so that way it was physically there, not just in, on paper, so.
Isn't it mandatory that they blow the whistle at both those crossings? They can't come through Webster Street without blowing it. Ain't they supposed to blow that whistle? That's mandatory, isn't it?
That's the requirement now. So if you get, if you establish a quiet zone, what happens is that they're not, they're no longer obligated to sound the horn. But if they see an obstruction on the tracks, they can blow the horn.
I took it.
It doesn't limit their ability to sound the horn if there's an emergency.
I think your word is routine train blast. That's what you have here, and that's probably, they're still going to blast them if, between the two things. And will this count with the yellow cones to keep the traffic from driving over the ruts and jumping over to the left?
It might. I mean, you know, things you look at are, you know, driveway locations. So like on Webster, we have a business just on the other side of the tracks, on the east side, that we're going to have to look at. I mean, there's, those are the things you have to look at as you go through it to see if the flexible delineators will be appropriate or not. And, you know, that's just all part of doing it. And what happens is, once you, there are, you have to calculate the safety index. And different safety features have different point totals. So like flexible delineators have one certain total. You can, there's other things that you can, like you can get more sophisticated gates and things like that. So there's a lot of different things. And oftentimes, the more, once you start doing like directional blast horns or gate improvements, it really, the costs amp up super fast. And that's when it usually becomes less than desirable to do it. But if you can, if you can maintain, you know, the points you need with simple safety additions, like the flexible delineators, then you can usually do it pretty, pretty cost-effectively. But it doesn't always happen. And we have a fairly complicated, you know, track here with the two lines and the siding, you know, so, a little different.
Okay. Any other comments? A motion?
So moved.
Second.
Moved in second. Call the roll, please.
Trustee Youngerman?
Yay.
Trustee Marisak?
No.
Trustee Bond?
Yes.
Trustee Spurling?
Yes.
Trustee Lee?
Yes.
Trustee Heinz?
Yay.
That carries 5-1. Thank you. Moving on, items for discussion. We have the boundary line agreement with the village of Oswego. And I'll ask Director Young for a summary.
Thank you. For several months, we've been working on the four different boundary agreements that we'd like to renew or put back into place, in the case of Aurora. But the most recent one has been Oswego. We've been working with their community development staff to move forward with an extension. They're interested in it at this point in time, because they're in the process of updating their comprehensive plan. And they'd like that to mesh with any adjustments in the boundary agreement. So what we've talked about with them, and they've agreed to do, is make a minor adjustment to the line. I passed out some colored sheets. It was a little bit difficult to read in the packet. Obviously, it was a small size and black and white. So if you look at the southern part of, obviously, the village, you'll see the Oswego line, and it goes all the way east to west. What we've done is, we've modified at Galena Road and Orchard Road, the northwest corner. Their staff and our staff have agreed that that property, instead of being in Oswego, on the Oswego side of the line, should be in Montgomery. So that's what's being brought forward to their board, as well as, obviously, tonight, to this board. So it's discussion only. At this time, we would then have to actually have a public notice in the paper and then bring this back to you in July for action. So be happy to answer any questions.
I have a question. In the boundary agreement that we've got with Aurora, there's an area of M2 that shows that it's in Aurora. Can you explain that, please?
Yeah, the boundary's in the wrong place. Trustee, that, I believe that the line is north and northeast of there. So I will double-check that.
Thank you.
But I think the line is just plotted incorrectly.
The boundary change with Oswego, was the need for that identified by our development staff? How did this issue surface?
Well, it's been identified as one of my goals that Jeff and I had met and laid out, getting a handle on where we were on all four boundary agreements. And so far, we've been able to renew the one with Sugar Grove. Came to an agreement with Yorkville that we would not pursue it at this time. There was still seven years left on the existing boundary agreement with Yorkville. And neither community saw the need to open that back up at this time. But with Oswego, since we both recently either completed a comp plan amendment, or in their case, they're finishing it, we felt that now was the time, even though there's a few years left on this one as well. And Jeff and I agreed to try to go after that corner that I mentioned earlier, because it just made a lot of sense that that would fall into the Montgomery side of the ledger, because we're surrounding the property. It would be difficult for Oswego to service it, frankly. And it just made sense to bring that into our side.
I appreciate that effort. Thank you.
If you guys have any other questions on this, you can direct them to Rich. Thank you, sir. Appreciate it. Last item for discussion, the one you've all been waiting for, is the fourth quarter financial and investment report from Justin.
Thank you, village president Broali. In front of the board tonight is the fourth quarter financial report. This is through April 30th. This is unaudited numbers at this point. So with 12 months, we're through 100% of the year. And so we're looking for the revenues and expenditures to be close to that percentage. General fund, the general fund budgeted revenues were $9.2 million, while the revenues through April 30th were $8.8 million, approximately 96%. The large revenues, state sales tax, we had budgeted $3.5 million. And we are estimating we're going to end up about $300,000 less than that through the end of fiscal year 15. Property tax, because of the property tax calendar, June and September is when we get our large dispersments from them. So we have been at 100% for some time on property taxes. The last one, the last large item, is state income tax. With the state income tax, we had budgeted $1.8 million and were projecting to be approximately $50,000 above that number as of April 30th. There's three smaller revenue line items that I wanted to note. One was building permits. We had budgeted $75,000 in building permits, and our actual through April 30th was $105,000. Professional services reimbursement, that is when we have, be it legal or engineering or planning, services from an outside organization. And then we build that back to a developer. And so we budgeted $140,000, and we're actually coming in approximately $188,000. Last item, fines and forfeitures, we had budgeted $368,000 and were coming in, we came in through April 30th at approximately $262,000, so. General fund budgeted expenditures, we had budgeted $9.2 million through April 30th. Through April 30th, we were looking at approximately $8.5 million. And then, there are several line items down below listed out that are higher than, um, higher than budget by 10% or more, and over $25,000. So, um, most of those are just timing, um, with activities throughout the year. The last two, legal and engineering, those are over, but our revenues are also over. That's one of the items that we just talked about. So, um, if there's any questions on the general fund, I can answer those at this time.
Could we discuss fines and forfe, forfeitures as to why that might be down?
Had that discussion during the year with the police. One of the issues is we've had a lot of newer officers. And so, as they're going through the FTO program, they will, won't spend as much time doing that because there are lots of different areas the training officers need to train them on. And so, they can't focus their time like that, like they would if they were just on the road on their own. So that's been at least one, one part of it. Is we've had a lot, I don't know, can't remember how many new officers we've had go through the FTO program this year, but a little higher than, than normal.
So that should adjust itself over time?
We're going to hope.
Or there's less reason to issue fines and forfeitures, which would be good too. Okay.
So Justin, it looks like the general fund will end the year with a net. What's the net on the general fund then?
The net right now, um, again, this is unaudited, but, um, the net is about, uh, $250,000 surplus. So, once, uh, we make all of the audit adjustments, we're in the middle of doing that right now. And the audit will start in, uh, the latter part of June. I'll bring that number, uh, back to the board for you to see it.
Thank you.
Sure.
How about, uh, our sales tax go up 1% coming up here? Does the state notify? I mean, I presume somebody like Walgreens will know because they're a big company, but how's the little guy know? Does the state notify them on their forms?
Yes, in short, yes.
Okay.
The, the state, the ST1 is the sales tax form that, um, our businesses that are submitting the sales tax fill out. They get those forms directly from the state and they will have the new rate on them as of July 1st. So, the businesses don't even, there's a notification from the state and then they get the forms with the new rate on them, so.
And the other thing, uh, could you put in all our boxes what is owed in the water department? Today on TV, they showed, uh, what the red light camera, what they owed, and it was like a billion dollars. Uh, of course, they whack a guy one time and then the very next month, they 10 times it, and the next month, they 10 times it. And all of a sudden, the guy instead of owing $100, he owes $10,000. But could you put that in our boxes, just where we're sitting on, on owed in the water department? I knew you gave it to us once, but just throw it in our boxes so we know what's happening there, if you could.
Certainly.
Is that, is that the document that goes in the packets every so often?
It hasn't been there in a while.
There, um, I don't think it's in this one. We do have a summarized version of that report, uh, in the packet. It's usually every other meeting.
Okay.
But it doesn't show any sort of detail or any sort of aging, like how long those have been outstanding or anything, so.
It's funny because they showed on TV how some of these red lights go back 10 years, five years. I mean, I mean, to get a billion dollars, it's gotta go back a long way. But I just wanted to see where ours was and when you write them off. Because some people skip the state and they're gone and you're never gonna catch them for 20 bucks, that type of thing, so. I appreciate it. Thank you.
It appears that we have, some of our lowest interest rate loans are coming due in, loan's not the right word, investments. If I'm reading the chart correctly, it's, um, the investments we've made more recently seem to be giving a higher return. Am I reading that right?
Um, what we've done over the last six months, um, and this is on page six. What we did over the last six months is, we wanted to get a three-year, three-year portfolio built so that, um, when a, an investment matures, the One West Bank already matured about a week and a half ago. When that matures, we actually go out for a three-year, uh, investment then, instead of getting lower interest rates in the near term. So what we did was, we started with six, 12, 18, 24, 30 and 36 month investments. So six investments each month for the last six months. Starting in May, uh, what we've, what we're doing is, we take that One West Bank that, that matured. We take that $100,000 and we put it out for three years. So, um, instead of getting 41 basis points, we got 1.4% when we renewed it. So, over time, that, that, uh, the total weighted portfolio yield at the bottom, the 1.099, that's gonna go up over time because we're rolling them over for three-year time periods now.
The longer interval is giving a better return then too.
Correct.
Okay.
Are you gonna go through each of these sections?
I can go through them really quick. Capital improvement fund, uh, that's where our utility taxes come in. Uh, we've got electric, natural gas and telecommunications utility tax. Electric, we're approximately $23,000 or projecting $23,000 below budget. So instead of 622, we're looking around $600,000. Natural gas utility tax, um, we had budgeted 221. We're actually looking for that to come in around 260 or 265. Telecommunications tax, um, we had budgeted 432 and we're looking for that one to come in, um, just under $400,000. So, um, you look at the, the three of them together and we're estimating we're gonna be about $20,000 under projections for the three put together, so. The capital improvement expenditures, um, the majority of those expenditures, 1.1 out of the 1.2 million dollars is for the transfer of those utility taxes to pay for our debt service. So, um, it's almost 87% of the money in there we're using to pay, uh, down the debt on the two buildings, so. Water fund, um, you can see that the budgeted revenues were at $4.5 million. We're looking to be around approximately $4.4 million as of April 30th. Water sales itself, uh, we had budgeted $3.5 million and we're, um, projecting we're gonna be about $160,000 below that. So just, just below $3.4 million, um, for the fiscal year. The budgeted expenses were, uh, $3.9 million and we're looking at coming in approximately $3.8 million, uh, so slightly under budget. And, um, there are several items down at the bottom, uh, four different items down at the bottom that, um, are over budget by $25,000 or more. Are over $25,000 and higher than, uh, the budget by 10% or more. So, when you look at them, um, they're individually not over each budget that much. Just, both of the line items are over $25,000, so that's what we look at there. And then, from there, um, the quarterly cash and investment report, that just shows you, uh, right now, how much, uh, cash and investments we actually do have, um, out there. It's separated into village cash and investments and then, um, cash investments held for others, where we are holding those monies. But, um, like the police pension, that is the police pension funds money. It's not the village's money. So, uh, in total, uh, you can see the total down at the bottom, $19.5 million. And then, um, we did talk about page six there briefly already. So, if there's any other questions, I can answer those at this time as well.
Awesome. Thank you. You have any questions? You know where Justin sits. Thank you, Justin. Appreciate it. Moving on, newer unfinished business?
I have a couple of items. I just wanted to share that trustee Heinz and I had a visit with Public Works last week. Got to tour the facility. I toured the water treatment plant, which was really cool. I know we talked about the trustees getting that opportunity, so I highly recommend it. It was, it was really quite good. Uh, my other question is for engineer Wallers. In regard to the repairs to the railroad crossing. It seems like BNSF did the repairs on the two tracks that are closer, but not that sidetrack. And it, it seemed like they did them pretty quickly, so then I was questioning, I started questioning myself when I was crossing that. But I still, I think they did do repairs on the two, but not the one on the side.
So, I, they didn't notify any, to the best of my knowledge, they didn't notify anybody that they were gonna do the repairs. I didn't physically see them, uh, do repairs. I don't doubt, it seemed to be better. I would concur with your assessment, but I didn't actually see it. And I don't think they did anything to that siding track. And I did specifically inquire with ICC as to whose responsibility the siding track is, and it's the BNSF. Now, it is used by the Burlington Junction, which is that, um, the, um, small railroad that moves the, um, you know, the railcars to our, or, uh, VVF and other, you know, locations. So I'm thinking we wanna follow up and see what's going on and what it's gonna take. Because that's probably worse than the two mainline tracks.
Yeah, I would agree.
So.
Okay.
So I'm gonna, I, I'm not sure exactly how to approach that. I don't know if we should just go back on the website and report, you know, the, because when I sent mine in, I specifically said, you know, the siding is bad. And I sent pictures and they asked me for that, so I think it's some follow-up, trustee, and then I can be back to you.
Okay. Would you like me to forward the emails I received?
Be helpful.
Okay.
Hey, I was looking for that email when we were talking about quiet zone stuff earlier on my phone, but I couldn't find it. The, um, I got a response back to, you know, Debbie submitted one on behalf of the village under my name. Got one back that said similar, that they were gonna go out there and tighten down the track or whatever it was. But then ICC was also requesting that BNSF, um, propose or put in some sort of a plan for upgrading or fixing the crossing. I don't know if that's just lip service or what, but seemed very specific.
Maybe recall, the second part of our strategy was to engage our local legislators to honor the ask for that, that crossing to be included in the BNSF five-year plan. I think we should really push that because, you know, with all due respect to the railroad, I think the work they're doing is kind of a stopgap. Because if you look closely at that crossing, it's got some age to it and it needs a full replacement, I think. You know, even though it may not, you know, we don't have the benefit of knowing what every crossing in the state looks like. So there could be, maybe we are in a good position and don't know it. But I certainly travel that way every day and it seems pretty bad to me. So, I think we should, you know, continue on that.
Mm-hmm. Certainly.
Thank you.
Hey Matt, did we take that pole building completely out?
Of the budget?
Building it, yeah.
Yes.
Yes.
Because they were showing me that, that garage they got back there, they got, uh, things in there that they use all the time. But that garage is falling apart. It's ready to collapse.
Yeah, I talked to.
And is there any way we can get something built for, even just to get, even a small building to get that stuff in? They don't wanna leave that out. Half the trucks are outside now anyway.
Yeah, I know that's, I just talked to trustee Spurling about that today as well. The, I don't know what the cost was for those buildings.
It was $160,000 for both of those buildings.
I, while I completely agree that when we park them outside, we're, we're not doing ourselves, um, you know, as best as we could. But with the pending cuts from the state, I'd rather park them outside for the winter than have to lay off an employee because we did the barn. But I, I agree with you that we're, we're wasting our equipment away the longer we park it outside. So if there's any other, um, one suggestion that I had, and I think I mentioned in here, I know other government entities have built garages. Maybe some of our equipment could, could be put in one of their garages for a fee.
Yeah, with the pole buildings, they don't have to have a door on them, just so they can get, get them in there and not drive them right in and have the electric and then plug them in out there.
Yeah.
That would save them trucks. But if we can't, we, we haven't got it, we haven't got it.
And that's, when President Broly and I were talking about that earlier today, I think that is starting to move up on the priority list for us because we've put off, uh, storage for Public Works. So I, I think we're going to have to take a serious look at it next year, budget time.
I have an item. Um, just a reminder that, uh, we have a sergeant who's been with us a long time that, uh, is retiring this Friday. Sergeant Greg Sullivan has been with us for 29 years now. He's done an outstanding job. If you're not fortunate enough to be able to go see him, uh, Friday at the PD, make sure that you find some time to, to talk to him and say thank you. So, uh, he's gonna be sorely missed.
Thanks, Steve.
Absolutely.
Thank you. Thank you.
We should also add that Sergeant just won Kendall County Officer of the Year. That was what, a week ago, two weeks ago? Yeah. So, yeah, we absolutely appreciate him. He will be missed.
Thank you. Any other items?
We have one item. Earlier this evening, you, uh, passed an ordinance related to the solicitor changing some things from our past discussion. The other item that came up was looking at, uh, trying to make the, the identification badge more legible. Uh, executive secretary Buchanan has been working on that. Um, and in front of you tonight, what you have is, the top one is our current license. The bottom one is what she was proposing for the new license. You can see, we've added the lines so that it has the company they work for and who they're soliciting for. And also it's made everything bigger, so it is a little more legible. Uh, we were limited to certain sizes so that you could get badge holders they could fit into. So Debbie has looked and this is one, you know, where we can get one that fits to, that they could wear around their neck then. So I just wanted to submit that, see if there are any, any comments. I felt like it tried to address the, the concerns that were generated.
We're still trying to do, uh, something colorful or something different. Just, it's not gonna be just a white sheet of paper anymore, is it?
Uh, that would have to look, I don't know what she was in color-wise. I mean, as far as for duplication, you know, we, it has to have the village seal on it. Is part of our thing to keep it from being replicated easily.
The only suggestion I have is to bold the expires. Because at our last meeting, when we had this in front of us, I had it sitting on my desk. When my wife informed me that the solicitor had come to the door, she had checked the village website and she said it doesn't show that there's any solicitors available. Well, lo and behold, it expired April 19th, didn't, wasn't issued April 19th. So the lady was actually out with her badge, walking, even though it had been expired. So, just bolding the expires portion maybe could.
Okay.
There's a provision for a signature by both the village clerk and the deputy village clerk. In the interest of making more room, maybe to make something else larger, do we, is there a feeling that we need both areas?
Is the, is the village clerk one a digital and the deputy one is an actual signature? It's probably how that is. So that way, one person is physically signing it, but the clerk should be the one. I think we probably need them both on there.
This is a big improvement, I think, and it's gonna serve the residents much more readily.
And if it comes down to the paper thing, I can talk to Debbie, because there's a multitude of.
Security papers.
Not, we, we don't even need security paper. We just need a, you know, a brighter type of paper. Do we give them a badge holder?
Yes.
Okay, so they get a badge holder with it.
We supply the badge and the badge holder.
So, yeah, I think that, um, we can definitely come up with some paper options that would work.
What is the cost of a solicitor's permit?
$30.
Yep.
Per offense? Per person.
Each person.
All right. Thank you. Anything else?
Uh, I'd just like to say that, um, thank you to trustee Bond. And we, we bumped into each other yesterday at the Memorial Day re-placing over at Riverside Cemetery. And it was, it was a gorgeous morning until about three minutes before it ended. It was a really nice, well-attended event. So thank you to the VFW for hosting that and providing it.
Future meetings, we plan a commission meeting June 4th. We have village board meeting June 8th, correction. And you can see the rest of the meetings on there. With that, I'll entertain a motion to go into executive session to discuss the employment of an employee pursuant to 5 ILCS 120 over 2C1, and to discuss collective negotiating matters pursuant to 5 ILCS 120 over 2C2.
So moved.
Moved by trustee Bond, second by trustee Youngerman. Call the roll.
Trustee Bond?
Yes.
Trustee Spurling?
Yes.
Trustee Lee?
Yes.
Trustee Hines?
Yay.
Trustee Youngerman?
Yay.
Trustee Marisak?
Yes.
Trustee Bond?
Yes.
Trustee Spurling?
Yes.
Trustee Lee?
Regent, thank you.
Say no. Say no. You're being a little...